They're talking to each other now, aren't they?
I'd like to call this meeting of the Pompton Lakes Planning Board to order. Following is the agenda for the regular meeting of the Pompton Lakes Planning Board. The meeting is to be held in the municipal building, 25 Lennox Avenue, on Tuesday, March 19, 2024, beginning at 7:30 PM. Formal written advance notice as required by NJSA 10-, excuse me, 10:4-1 at Sec, has been provided at this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, giving the time, date, and location, and to the extent known at the time, the agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken. The meeting will be video recorded and will be broadcast for later viewing for the public. The notice was posted on the bulletin board outside of the offices with the municipal clerk, reserved for this and other similar announcements. Provided to the suburban trends, the newspaper designated by the council and the planning board to receive such notices, and filed with the borough clerk. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's a regular meeting minute. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Simone?
Here.
Mr. Ferchara?
Here.
Mr. Tros?
Here.
Ms. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Rye?
Here.
Dr. Tom Dexter-Loxley? Mr. Keating?
Here.
Mr. Aguilar?
Here.
Mr. Valby?
Here.
Mike Farah?
Here.
And Captain McMillan?
Here.
Thank you all. First item is minutes. I'm gonna request that the minutes be postponed until next meeting. I asked Khan to look into one section, so we'll just postpone them to the next meeting and then make a decision on them then. And it's for the application that's gonna come next meeting anyway, so it'll be okay to do that. Under correspondence, there are several items. There's Borough Bloomingdale, zoning Article 5, Chapter 92, regulations governing certain uses. Section 9226 miscellaneous uses of the code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. These are all on file in the Office of Planning and Zoning. Legal Notice, Ordinance Number 112024, amending Chapter 134 Land Development, Section 134-10.6 Environmental Protection Review Fees of the Code of Township of Wayne. Another Wayne Ordinance 122024, in ordinance to amend Chapter 134 Land Development Article 6, Environmental Protection of the Code of Township of Wayne. And there's a letter from Remington and Vernick Engineers regarding the freshwater wetlands and flood hazard area permit application for Herschfield Park Pedestrian Bridge. And for anyone that doesn't know about that, that is a project that the county will be undertaking to replace the bridge at Herschfield Park with a new type of arch or truss bridge. And to be followed at a later date for the bridge that's at the bottom of West Lennox Avenue. And we'll save this for later. And that's the correspondence. So the first item on the agenda tonight, which is a carryover, which was PB 2303, an application for 735 Hamburg Turnpike. This is just notice to anyone that's paying attention here. At the meeting was agreed to be carried over to April 16, 2024. So anyone interested in the continuation of that hearing should tune in on the 16th of April. There are no conceptual, and we have a new business planning board, 24-01 County of Passaic, Pompton Lakes Recycling Center, 10 Ivy Street, in the borough, and it's capital review under Section 31 of the land use law. And I'm gonna ask our attorney just to explain that for anyone who's not here that might be interested in the reason why this is being done and what actually results from this meeting. So, Mr. Attorney, if you could please do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep. This is one of the different functions that the planning board has, called capital review under Section 31. When there is a governmental entity that is going to be undertaking essentially a land use project in the expenditure of funds in the municipality, those have to get, those get referred to the planning board for your review in conjunction with the master plan and typically any other topics that you deem relevant. This is not an application. You do not give them approval, but they are required to submit this. You have a hearing on it and you can provide, as I said, provide comments on consistency or conjunction with the master plan and other land use concerns. And they, then they go on their way. So that's where we are. As I said, there's no vote. It is a hearing, but not an application, so witnesses typically gets warned in.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming to our meeting and presenting tonight. If you take the end chair, it just uncouples it, or take this one right here and you can slide it over.
Might as well swear as men. Is it okay?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Bloom, Assistant County Counsel for Passaic County. I'm here with Kenneth Simpson, Supervisor of Roads for Passaic County, and Norton Murphy, Assistant County Engineer.
Both of you gentlemen, raise your hands, please. State your name and spell your last.
Kenneth Simpson, S-I-M-P-S-O-N.
Norton Murphy, N-O-R-D-A-N-M-U-R-P-H-Y.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
Okay, proceed.
That's progress.
Yeah, just need to brighten these two up and we're golden.
I'm not touching it.
Good job, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Kenneth Simpson. I'm the Supervisor of Roads. I supervise the day-to-day management of the Roads Department, and I'm also the lead project manager for this particular project. We are very happy as the county to present this project to you this evening. We put a lot of thought into the design and layout, and we've worked very closely with your DPW Director, Dan Thor, who's been very instrumental in giving us guidance on the particular plan. So what we have on the screen is our site name. I'd just like to go over a few key points of the layout. What we're proposing is a new salt storage building. The building had a capacity of about 2,000 tons, and we will be sharing this building with the municipality. We're also sharing the site with the recycling center. We've made several visits to the recycling center, watched it in operation at different times of the day, and we saw where there could be some several improvements. One of those improvements, which you see on the screen, is the traffic flow. So if I can, I would like to just go over the access points and how we're gonna flow and how we're gonna share the site. So all vehicular traffic will come off of Ivy Street. The recycling center would be the far right driveway. That driveway will be for public access only. The driveway to the left will be going into the salt storage property. That will be restricted to the municipal and the county snow operation only. When a motorist, a resident comes in to do their recycling, they would come down the driveway, be met with the existing welcoming shed, and then they can easily just pull over to the side, drop off their recyclables, and work their way down towards the site. We decided with Dan to reconfigure the concrete pad where the waste bins are, so that we can create just one continuous movement for the residents, where they would just drive down that driveway, stop in front of a bin, easily drop off their stuff, and continue out onto Laurel Street. We felt this plan would work well for the municipality because it stops residents from returning and leaving Grove Street and going to an unsignaled intersection. Now they can drive up to Laurel, and it's a better traffic movement and flow for the entire area. We're also proposing a warming shelter on the site, which is also gonna be shared with our staff and the municipality during the winter operations so that guys can, you know, take a break. We're gonna have a porta john style bathroom in the morning. And there'll also be some HVAC wall mounting units to keep it warm. Also on the site, we're proposing four parking spaces. Those parking spaces are specifically for the snow piles. They'll also have electric outlets next to each one of the parking spaces with an engine block here so that we can store our vehicles overnight in the cold elements. We're also proposing some vegetation to try to screen some of the waste bins away from the new veteran housing, just so that the seniors and the veterans don't really have to look at bins. They can look at some nice green vegetation. And we're also proposing to add some trees around the site, just to kinda give it a warm, welcoming feeling. There will be new curbs and sidewalks around the entire perimeter of the site. We are proposing to put a fence around the entire site also with privacy slats so that our equipment, this house equipment, is kinda out of the view of the traffic. We are proposing some lighting on the site so that everyone lived during the winter operation, especially at night. I don't believe the recycling hours is open after 5:00, so the lighting will really be for the operator, the snow operation. As you can see on the site, there is also a fence going across the site. This is a rolling gate, and this gate will stay closed. This gate will stay closed when we're not having the snow operation. So that way, the public can't enter the site by mistake. And all the keys and everything will all be shared with the municipality on the roof. Where it's a county project, but we know and anticipate that the municipality will use the site probably 90% of the time, and not so 10%.
So that's all one-way traffic starting up at Grove and going right through the site and coming back out on Laurel. And that applies to the salt vehicles as well?
Yes, they will come into Ivy Street also. They will flow down the dome, and then they'll continue their way out onto Laurel.
And just for the record purposes, the development of the housing site is south of that? On the piece of property that's at the bottom of the drawing?
Immediately adjacent.
Right, just so anyone that's looking at this video can see that that's where the site is.
And our sidewalks will connect, so you can take the sidewalk straight from the veteran housing all the way up to Ivy. So we do have, we received an engineering report. I did wanna go over a few comments. Hopefully I addressed it in my explanation of the site. We are proposing an eight-foot fence. That's for to provide privacy screening for this type of site. We feel a shorter fence might not serve its purpose for security reasons.
Is the eight-foot because you're concerned about security or appearance?
Both. Mainly security. We wanna make sure that people can't easily just jump and hop over the fence, but also we wanna make sure that the site looks neat and uniform. To our knowledge, there are no existing agreements as far as the municipality utilizing the county's property, but I think in the last several months, we've rectified all the agreements and added formalities. As I mentioned, the access driveways are split. It's the recycling driveway that interests for the public, and then the snow operation driveway, and everything will be clearly labeled and signage. That will be restricted to just county and municipal employees only.
One other question. Since the main reason for using the county side is salt accessibility, those gates, I would assume, normally will be closed on both ends?
Yes, during non-
And that typically they wouldn't need them during the day, say on a spring day or a winter day? That's not snowing or anything? So the traffic through there, if you will, would be really dependent upon the winter weather?
Yes.
Okay.
So during some winter event, are the gates just gonna be open? Somebody's gonna go there and open them? Or is there gonna be electronic tags or something like that that's gonna open them as a vehicle comes in to access the site?
Someone will be there to open them, and just to give you some context, the county anticipates no more than three vehicles coming out of the site for our entire operation. This will serve like our Midland County region, so we won't be more than three vehicles.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, like, I know you guys try to get ahead of the storm, but I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna be depending on that site for our salt, it'll be open and accessible for the municipality? You know, it's not gonna be like, well, Jordan showed up with the key today, so the gate's locked and can't get in.
No, no, no. The municipality have their own set of keys, and you come and go as you please. We don't dictate the movements of when you go, because you may order salt all the time that we not ordering salt. So it would be clearly up to you, municipality, how they operate.
And it's being addressed, there is an easement agreement that's being generated and developed between the county and the town that will spell out responsibilities and access for that as well.
Okay.
So I hear we're gonna have different colors of salt, so we know who's the truth.
No, we worked well sharing the previous salt dome.
Yes, we did.
It hasn't been any issues in years I've been here. So moving along with the, some of the drainage comments. So we're proposing to connect our drainage system with the new housing development drainage system. So all we're basically doing is taking our water and tying it to their calculations in their system. However, if the board does need to see our stormwater calculations, we can provide that to you.
It will be provided with a pending citation for the veterans housing project?
Yes.
I just wanna explain to everybody, so they're doing what our attorney mentioned now, but the housing authority has to do a full presentation to the redevelopment agent because it's not a county project. It's not gonna get the same respect that's happening here for the county now because it's an independent program. So just so everybody's understanding, this is a county project, the other piece is not. Yes, that will get the redevelopment presentation actually happening Thursday, and then they're also required to get planning board approval for the site sign.
Also, we do, we are proposing the lighting plan. That was one of the comments. And also the hours of operation, that would be up to the recycling center. And our snow operation is basically from, I would estimate, December 1st to March 31st.
Right, as needed.
Yeah, as needed.
During this project, while it's being constructed, will there be a time that the recycling center will not be available to the residents?
We do plan to work with Dan very closely right before we start the construction and during the construction so that we can try to minimize as much of the impact to the residents as possible. I do anticipate some minor inconveniences, but we would have to kind of work through that, maybe stage some of the bins, certain areas. But we hope not to create too much of a disturbance for residents. Even notifications, we're gonna make sure we work with Dan so he can get that out to the residents.
I noticed there's grading changes being proposed. Some are on the substantial side. Where the dumpsters are located for the various materials to be recycled, is that at grade, below grade, or how is that set up? Because I've heard varying comments about having an elevator platform to a above-ground unit versus a walk-in to a depressed unit, and I was wondering if any discussion took place about that?
Yes, we tried to minimize any tripping hazards or any type of ADA issue that might occur with the curb. So the concrete slat flush is at grade.
Is at grade.
At grade. So the dumpsters are still gonna be four feet high or whatever? So will it be a platform to be able to, some people can't lift over four feet?
That's not part of our project. If that's something that's required by the town, maybe we can have a subsequent discussion with your department.
I'd like to have that looked into, maybe Dan and you could work that out because, you know, if somebody's not, it's okay if it's a small amount of material, but cardboard gets heavy, you know, maybe they have a large container of plastics. Even though it's plastics, they still can get heavy. And quite honestly, some people just don't have that upper arm strength to dump it in, so I wanna make sure that people can take advantage of that. Is there any preferred alignment that would help that? Like, is it better to, with the grading, to lower the, and put them in at an angle or something?
It won't work with grades because you have to remember you have to have the trucks come in to drop them off and pick them up. And there's already a significant slope coming down to the dumpsters. If we were to drop them further, it would be much steeper, much more difficult. You don't have the topography to make it work.
So I've talked to Dan about it. What we have now, and you're all familiar with what we have, it'll stay pretty similar to what we have. We'll have some elevated areas, some heavier stuff, and then the lighter stuff, where we just be able to toss it. Like, the cardboard would stay the same way it is right now. Beyond pads, just throw them in the machine and walk away. We are gonna have on heavier stuff, still go upstairs if you want.
Okay.
Does the board have any other questions?
Yeah, you know, just looking at the-
You wanna go back to the site plan?
No, I can see from here the containers. So the way the containers, what do you got, six or seven of them there?
Six.
Yeah, so just from what I'm eyeballing, it doesn't look like there's room for stairs the way it's set up now.
Not everyone will have it.
You know, but it doesn't even look close. It looks like you're gonna have to take a container out of there to actually fit those stairs in there. I think you have two sets of them in there now. And I'm gonna say at least one container, you're only gonna be able to put five containers there if you're gonna have the same setup.
Can one of those containers-
I don't even know. It doesn't even look like there's room for that, to be honest with you. Really doesn't.
Well, something will have to move with the-
Yeah.
Can that be spread out where you move the easternmost container further to the right, and then you space them a little bit?
Not at this time. Part of the reason that corner is no longer has dungeons of DEP is requiring. That area has to be cleared.
So where they're sitting now is really gonna be open?
Well, they might be attached in the front. I don't know how Dan plans it. It might be on the front of each.
No, but what he's saying is the containers can't go into that corner?
Right.
The far corner there.
Not as part of this.
Right, where they're sitting now, basically. Probably for the stream and cro-
And that'll be a concrete pad that they're all sitting on?
Correct.
And the drainage from that?
It all gets directed down into the future detention system to be located within the veterans housing project. Just about where that cursor is, there will be a surface detention base.
Okay. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, so the way the dumpsters come in, they come in, you know, top left to bottom right, you know, on that angle. Is there gonna be space in the back of the dumpsters that you could potentially have some sort of, like a four-foot walkway or three-foot elevated walkway so that if somebody climbed a set of stairs at either end, could get to that third dumpster in the middle and dump something into it?
To answer your question, I left that to the municipality. I didn't wanna control your operation or make adjustments, so I just worked with Dan on basically figuring out how many of the waste bins you needed and how we could fit it within the footprint that we were given. But I didn't wanna make those decisions for the municipality at all.
Okay, but I'm just saying that potentially there could be room for a three-foot ladder.
Honestly, we have six. If Dan feels there's a need, if we only have five, we can configure this.
To your point, there is a little bit of room between the property line and the dumpsters to possibly provide some tiny good passageway. If there's a desire for that, we would ask the town to come up with what they would like to see. We wouldn't necessarily construct it, but we could adjust our plan to provide the space.
Okay. Because a set of stairs at either end and then a connecting walkway, not ideal if you're gonna be lugging stuff up the stairs, but you're gonna be climbing the stairs to put the stuff in the dumpster.
So the cardboard compactor and all that's gonna stay basically where it is?
Yes.
That's gonna, all right.
Right here. In this area right here. And the tire sheds and everything stays the same?
Tire shed stays the same. Battery and electronics has got it.
Everything stays the same. Only thing that we're moving is those existing wastings along them.
The metal and stuff in the corner, okay.
Is any, you didn't mention paving. What's paved and not paved?
All the gray is the paved portions, and there's gonna be new sidewalks and curbs and the driveway. We did not have room in our budget to continue this paving down the full length of the drive that the residents will be driving on, but that's something that we could look at in the future.
So it'll be just like stone, like?
Exactly what it is now. But hopefully we'll pave in the first 20 feet.
Okay.
So the plant's quite small on there. I wonder if you can zoom in. Between the paved area where the salt trucks will go and the existing location of the battery storage and cardboard storage, that area in the middle?
This area right here.
Below your amenity building. What's in there, right there?
This is the cell, the existing cellphone tower and infrastructure right here. And that will remain the same in place, won't be touched.
Right, okay.
So I just wanted, first of all, I wanna thank the county for putting the time into doing this because this is just part of a project that they're building that's gonna benefit us in doing the recycling center. When we started this discussion initially, you know, this wasn't part. They didn't have to do this to make their building work. Through discussion, we were able to make this happen. So it was a partnership at that point to make our area better and also help them do what they need to do, so.
Yeah, I think it's an improvement for everybody right now. So I think it's still appreciated that the up-county towns will have the salt shed closer to us. I mean, it was nice having the salt shed or salt dome, but it was just terribly maintained from old, old buildings that when they were taken down, everybody went like, so thank you for that, too. I'm sure it was not a place that the guys would forward to working. Anything else on the letter from Colliers that you wanted to address, and then I'll ask you if there's anything that you wanna add to it? Not from your end?
Okay, I just have a few things, and just, I'm sure the board all knows this, but just for total authority, this was always anticipated as part of the senior housing redevelopment plan. They're doing what we envisioned them doing, so this is right on target. My primary comment would be understanding that the fence needs to be eight feet for security purposes primarily. Have you considered beefing up the landscape in kind of between the fence and the street to kind of give some aesthetic improvement along those corridors?
Yes, we did. However, we had to stay within a certain budgetary requirement. So we felt that the area where the new veterans housing part, we felt that that was a critical point there
Yeah.
to screen, but to screen the entire site would be a bit much. That's why we decided to put trees to kind of give that warm
Yeah.
feeling.
Okay.
We can also work with the municipality on the specific color of the privacy slats also so that we aren't saying green when you prefer bright, basically. So we will work with that.
Okay. And just, oh, can you speak to the, and this might be a question for the lawyer, that paper street and the use of that street and where we're at with all of that?
So there are two paper streets. Are you referring to Locust or?
Well, both.
Okay, so Locust Street, the paper street, you know, extends further along, you know, past the edge of the site. And so the borough vacated that portion of Locust Street sometime last year. Under the law, if a paper street is vacated, the portion- Under the law, if, if a paper street is vacated, the, uh, portion, uh, one half of the portion belongs to the northern parcels, one half belongs to the southern parcels. And so, um, this, um, this operation is using the northern half of, uh, the vacated Locust.
But it is eventual, it is essentially under the ownership of, it, it's part of that lot now, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted, I, that's what I thought, but I wanted the official, the official word.
Andy wants to move on Grove.
Uh, Grove Street is still a paper street. And, uh, we don't really have any intentions of, um, of changing that at that point. Uh, the, uh, the operation, I believe, um, exists going basically down the halfway mark of Grove, of the paper street. Um, it, it does not, uh, go over to the eastern side of the paper street, I believe.
Got it. And last but not least, are there any operational, um, steps to prevent salt sort of seeping into the, into the water system, into the, into the, um, sewer pipes or?
Groundwater.
Thank you.
Stormwater.
Yes, uh, we, we are proposing an asphalt base inside of the dome.
Okay.
To, to prevent any of the.
It'll create a barrier, basically.
It'll create a barrier, yes.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions?
Did, um, Mr. O'Rourke, did he submit anything approving this or in favor of this?
The only thing we got was one, uh, let's see.
From the MUA police.
Yeah, and that's, those were both in favor with just the.
Been working with the county, so he's been, he's actively selling. You know, they're bouncing off each other. So he's our, we rely on him to do what he thinks is best for his men's work and for us and for the town.
So he suggests he's in favor of this?
He's in favor of this 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've had meetings with him for the design.
And the MUA has no issue and Police Department was just concerned about during the construction safety.
There's no grass in the sand. Well, who's responsible for the grass?
We are. Uh, there's only, the grass area is up in this area.
So you'll maintain that grass?
Any other members from the board? Um, I'll entertain any comments we don't need open?
For the public, yes.
Yeah, I guess I'll open it for the public meeting. If, uh, anyone here from the public wishes to speak, seeing that there are none, propose the public session. Okay, so you've heard some comments. I mean, first of all, let me thank you for coming. Uh, thank you to the board of, no, not the board anymore, it's now the commissioners. Uh, thank you to the commissioners on behalf of our board for letting you guys come up here and explain things and giving us the opportunity to comment. We certainly obviously have no issues. The recommendations are almost insignificant. You guys have put a lot of work into it to get to this point. And I'm glad to hear of the communication that you've all had between your people in the boroughs, people the mayor says, you know, they're happy from his end. So I think it's a win-win. Any other comments by anyone? Gentlemen, do you have any other? No? Okay, then, uh, we don't have to do anything else except write.
I'll work with you on getting you a letter that you've satisfied your section 31.
May that satisfy you from your respect?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Great, okay, thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Um, I have two more things on the agenda tonight. First is with regret that I read the following letter from Mr. Enchler. "I have been a member of the planning board since 2018. During this time, I have been pleased to volunteer my judgment and consideration to the board in the undertaking of its business. My wife and I will be moving out of Pompton Lakes at the end of this month and will no longer be residents of the borough. And as a result, I tender my resignation as a board member. I've enjoyed my time on the planning board and am grateful for the opportunity to serve my community. I wish you good fortune for the future. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you very much for all of your comments. You've been a very active member. Your comments are well received. I think you've done very well for the community. And, uh, I would certainly say that it's been an asset to the borough. So thank you for your efforts and the time you've spent. It's coming up on six years now, right?
Yes, 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 with, um, the, um, the online version during the COVID period, which was, uh,
Interesting.
Yeah, an interesting experience for, for us. What we've learned from that and what we've done, I'm glad we're back in, uh, in physical capacity. Uh, I think it does the, the applicants and the public, uh, a significant favor to have discussion. And the public, and, you know, and I think the, um, the opportunities you give for the public, the public comments are very deserved and very welcome. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Wish you the best in your next move and where you're going is what town?
Princeton.
Princeton.
We move into Princeton on Saturday, uh, this coming Saturday. Our house completes the following, uh, following Monday, I think.
And I'm sure you had no problem selling your existing.
Went like that, honestly, it really did, yes, yes.
Unfortunately for us and great for you.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wish you the best in Princeton and if you decide to participate in any municipal, uh, boards or anything there, if you need a recommendation, please let me know. And thank you again for what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Oh, business now, hmm. Okay, so the redevelopment hearing from last month was interesting. Uh, they heard a new proposal from Mr. Satrikian regarding his properties, which go back towards solar, um, products. And they also, um, uh, heard the initial, and I guess, it wasn't an application yet, I guess, from the county. It was more of an introduction of what's going to happen with this property. One of the things that came up at the redevelopment hearing last month was there was concern about how the redevelopment is improving, is approving plans that may or may not be in agreement with the master plan. And the redevelopment, and I'm going to ask Andy, because Andy was at the meeting, if you could, just relate the two. The ma, the master plan is a, is a document that provides a vision. And the vision, it does not have any enforcement ability like the zoning ordinance does. So the master plan, which is the committee that we again approved for this year to move forward and a little more involvement now, it's going to be tasked with looking at how the borough of Pompton Lakes moves forward and, and how it sees development taking place in a number of ways. But the redevelopment agency is, is kind of a separate entity that doesn't necessarily have to abide by the master plan, if I remember correctly.
Well, I'd like to chop, bite that, take that a few bites.
Okay. Go ahead.
The redevelopment plan, which is the, essentially the zoning for redevelopment areas, is a zoning, is a zoning ordinance. And it has to go to, uh, it gets passed as any other zoning ordinance, first reading by the governing body, it comes to the planning board. And there's, there is a review on whether or not it's consistent with the master plan.
They're two separate entities. The zoning ordinance comes after the master plan.
The master plan, and I'm talking about the redevelopment plan.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Master plan, we'll get on that separate. So, um, the redevelopment plan, which is the zoning for a redevelopment area, has to be consistent with the master plan. If it is not consistent with the master plan, then this board, if this board ever found to be inconsistent with the master plan, governing body could still adopt it, but they'd have to put their reasons on the record and a few, few other hurdles. They could do it, but that's, I don't think that's ever happened here where you found it to be inconsistent. So the redevelopment plans, which is the zoning for redevelopment areas, have all been found to be consistent with the master plan. The, the application that is bef, the presentation, actually just a presentation by, uh, for the Pompton Plaza, that very tall project, is, is only that. It is a presentation. And at all of those meetings, it has been specifically referenced that no matter what the redevelopment agency does on designating them and, and if you want to say approving that project, it cannot go forward and it would have to be contingent on the governing body changing the redevelopment plan. It would have to change the height, uh, if that project was ever to go forward, um, because it, it is significantly over the height. They're not allowed to get a use, they're not allowed to get a height variance more than 10%. The cantilever adjustment has to come to the planning board. So there's, it couldn't do it. So the, any, any belief that the redevelopment agency is doing things that are inconsistent with the master plan, I haven't seen that and that hasn't happened, um, because there are limits on what they can do. They look at, they review projects and determine on whether they are consistent and would be beneficial to the municipality, consistent with the master plan, uh, consistent with the redevelopment plan, consistent with the other redevelopment that's going on downtown, and then designate them to allow them to come to this board, to the planning board. And again, if it was something that was very high, like is being discussed, then there's a two-layer approval. Even redevelopment agency, any approval and designation would come with a contingency. Before you could ever go to the planning board, you'd have to go to the governing body and have a change. So I hope that answers.
I think so. There's a reason I'm bringing it up.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I was watching it on channel 77 and what, um, one of the, um, representatives said was that the master plan, maybe heights should be looked at, looked at and changed, you know? But, um, what I got from the contractor is that in their mind, if this doesn't go forward with the height, that they're going to build like three buildings, they're going to go back to the idea of the original plan?
So I don't know if that's true.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So if you are correct, if for some reason the governing body decides they don't want to do this, uh, motion, they can still build with lower than five stories on the property they have now and not need any approvals. Except the variances that they would.
They would, they would need the redevelopment agency.
Yes.
To give approval because they're, the site plan application, you go before this board. In order to go to the planning board, you have to fill a check question in order to be complete. And item number 19 is that if it's in a redevelopment area, they've been designated by the redevelopment agency. So they couldn't just go do it. They still need approval from the redevelopment agency to, to do what, as you said, whether you want to call that a veiled threat or hey, we're going to do this, we don't get, they still need approvals, several different.
And then from there, they come in.
Yep.
And they wouldn't need the council in between on that one.
Remember, I, I forged when I was first building 100 years ago, you know, that needed a height requirement, right? That's where we got that height from. Um, is that, that was the highest building at the time. So anything below that height can theoretically get built in town by just going to your boards, except if it's in a redevelopment, something like the attorney's saying, then the redevelopment board would have to okay that. But if, if you take it as a trend or take it as a fallback or however you look at it, um, the council does have the final say on the height. They're going to say yes or no to that height. If they say no, that doesn't mean the project goes away. It just means he changes it to what fits within his realm.
Right.
Everything's a balance.
Now, when you say five stories, and, and I don't know if you know or if, if Andy will answer this, is it five stories from street level or five stories from the parking lot in the back, which is conceivably a floor and a half to two floors lower?
It's not the floor in the back. It's, it's, the height is a long Monique, I don't have it in front of me, but it's not, it is not, um, measured from the parking lot back there. It's from that one.
From the street.
But I, I guess that the whole back of the place would be parked underneath anyway.
There's been different proposals, their, their proposed, their current proposals, they would, you know, the current proposal. There's been several different ones, has several levels of garage parking in the back. But, but the, things have changed. So there's nothing set in stone or anything like that. I think, you know, my take, having heard this, what's come, is that the height would be a huge change to the skyline of Pompton Lakes. It is of interest to a lot of people in Pompton Lakes. It's being aired, but it's something that has to go to the governing body. I mean, that, that's just, it's not going anywhere. And, and that's, it, it may be a great change and that's up to the citizens of Pompton Lakes. But that's, it's going nowhere until, you know, the current proposal, until the governing body and the public say yes.
I guess the question that I was getting at, like Anne Marie had commented, they said they'll build multiple buildings on the property. So, you know, if they're going to build a building in the back, where does that five stories count from now? Because it's a physically detached building that's not touching Monique Ave. Is it five stories from the parking lot level?
Building in the back would be a whole lot of, I think there'd be a lot of difficulty because of the, the push, push up to the water. That's going to be a big issue.
Well, and the issue in the back would be, remember, every property owner owns the property individually to the back, right? So if they build across property lines, have to get to that property somehow. And to do that, you'd have to cross property lines. Theoretically, somebody could put up a fence and say, you're not crossing my property. That's why his project is presented, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, but he has his own entrance and exit on his property to get into those properties. If he has to rely on the outside coming in, that's not going to work. No one's going to give approval for that.
Well, there's nothing here.
He did lower the height.
There's nothing here to deal with. The only reason I'm bringing it up is because it was discussed at the redevelopment and we're dealing with master plan update or actually redoing the master plan. And so I'm going to ask the committee to, when they do the master plan work, you'll be working with the planner and you'll, our planner, and you'll be working with, um,
Debbie?
Whatever other you, well, I don't know, will Debbie or you handle that?
Me.
You, okay, so we'll, we'll work with the planners and we will work with the town and try to come up with something that makes sense to present and have it, obviously it's got to be approved by the borough. So, um, it's just a matter of when we're, when we're looking at the master plan, there's not so much we can change about the residential areas. I mean, they're pretty much set in stone. We're really talking the, the big corridors of the Hamburg Turnpike, possibly Ringwood Avenue and, uh, and Monique Ave. So, um, we've seen development so far of, um, one building that's built and, uh, that's the one on Lakeside, 21 Lakeside. And we've seen, uh, the one going up now from Meridian. And so to give you guys a chance to review, you know, what those do to the town and what they don't. I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
No, it's fine. And I, and I think you just brought up a good point. We're all learning from this too, right? We're not experts in any of this. And we've learned, going back to your master plan question, I had a meeting today with the conceptual developer and we learned that we have to put dog space into these buildings, you know, places for animals to, to go. Because for, on used Lakeside, for example, there, we didn't build that into the master plan or to that project. So a lot of people are walking their dogs up to high school, okay? So now we spoke to that, we spoke to that developer and he's going to build an area within his own property to, to put some space for a dog area. But I think that's something that would go into a master plan as we move forward. That would be vital as we, as we go. Because, you know, everyone, people have pets and we just didn't take that into account. So we learned that, you know, that's something we learned.
Yeah, as long as they allow pets, then you're absolutely right. But see, that's why it's just going to take a long time to develop. Things have changed so much in the last 15 or 20 years that, you know, there's a lot that's going to be thought about and changed because, you know, you have the EV parking now. EV parking has, it's, it's good and it's bad. From the fire aspect, it can be terrible. Having EV parking on the rebuilding would be a real, I mean, there was just a, a recent fire where, um, the EV was under the, in the garage, right, in, uh, Burton County, was it? And they had a hell of a time putting it out because you just got to basically continuously pump water on it. So, you know, having that under rebuilding is not the best thing in the world. Concrete can fail. So, um, you know, but that's required now. So there's going to be a lot of changes that are going to be adapting to our current technologies. And so, you know, I'm going to ask that you guys, when you meet and sit down and really give it a, uh, you know, good thorough looking, that you'll have guidance from Colliers as to what should and shouldn't be looked at. And it's going to take a good year, a year and a half, just to get to the point where we can have a draft, so.
And we rely on boards. We have excellent boards, you know, this being one of them. We rely on, on the recommendations that the boards make. You know, you guys can say yes, you can say no, we want this change, we want that change, and the council does look at that. I mean, we're, we're not really the experts in that. It's why we have boards, so you guys can do the legwork on all of this stuff. Um, and so your, your recommendations do go far.
Any questions? You guys have any, yes, John?
So, do we know the status of that project?
Which one?
So it was a presentation to the redevelopment, but was it concept?
I think that they are reconsidering once again.
It's all, okay.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
No, it happened.
Yeah, there's no application pending. I think that they got feedback. My understanding is that they, there's a general understanding that the ultimately, in order to do what they currently like, in the 10 or 11 or 12 stories, whatever it is, they would need governing body approval. So I think there's been some discussion, go there and see if they can get that. And then still, still come back to redevelopment. I don't know if that's been done yet. I think there's been discussions, but they're, it's all been conceptual. They've changed it now three times. They've come down. They've changed it now three times, they've come down in height. So I think they're just getting a feel from all the decision makers in town on do what they want to do.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, that's, it's conceptual, isn't it? And I just remind everybody, with Meridian, when they built that, we probably saw 10 different conceptual documents before that actually became a plan. So, you know, and this group is very anxious to go right away, but it doesn't always work that way.
Do you?
And you learn something from everyone you do. You know, that's another thing is, you know, the first one we did on Lakeside, we found some things that we would change and Meridian had that. Plus, do we have any update on CJM building?
Yeah, I actually have a good update. So the reason I know what's going on at Lakeside, the building was sold to a new owner who made it his point to come and meet with the mayor, the administrator, the police chief, fire chief, all the departments to say, look, whatever we need to do to make things better, you let me down, we'll do it. So it's a very active person. You know, because of COVID, there were some situations where we couldn't remove people out of that building because of rent control ideas. He's slowly removing some of the people that were causing some trouble. The building is working better and he's going to make some big improvements to it. He's already telling me he's going to redo the whole lobby with tile and things like that. So that's a new owner. CJM building, Matt and Sal two weeks ago to go over their plans, they've gotten, they're just about there for their final plan. Once they get their final plan, they have 60 days to start building.
Oh, so that 60-day clock hasn't started?
It doesn't start until they get their plans. But their plans are done. So he wants the building, he's a rusher. He's knocking on the door every day.
I thought the plans were approved for the previous owner.
He wanted to make some minor changes.
Right, there were changes, some minor changes made.
So that does, that, those minor changes don't trigger the having to go back to the redevelopment agency?
What he needed to do now, and in order, I think the technicality, whether or not they're ready, the cost, he gets, you get permits when you pay for them. So Sal can say, yes, they're ready, but it doesn't start that day because he doesn't have permits that day. When he comes in and pays, pays the fees for it, that's when the cost starts to. He's telling me he hopes to have it finished by October. Finished, hopefully, we all know it's a nice story, so the sooner we get it done, the better.
Okay, I'm just getting concerned because it was like, oh, two more weeks, two more weeks, two more weeks, and here we are, people are asking what's going on.
Well, it takes time to get, like he said.
I know.
You know, CJM was quiet and everybody was yelling, look, they're not doing anything. They're already built two stories on that in like a month and a half, so, you know, and it just.
You mean on Meridian?
On Meridian, I'm sorry. They did put a, we asked them again, this is good news, this is breaking news, actually. The Civic Center, you know, we've been in talks with them, they were going to build us pretty much a new Civic Center with a second story for storage up top, which is a good deal. They're going to build us a women's locker room for our officers in there. So there's some good things coming out of that, that project. And hopefully, have that building will be started soon so we can get the Civic Center back open, you know, it's been closed for two years. So we'll get that building back open early brand new.
Amen to that.
Yeah, that's a big one. So we're going to get rid of the trailer in the back there, that's part of it too, that little trailer right here. They're going to build that into the new building and the trailer will be gone also.
Anyone else?
Question, Mike. I heard rumor that there's going to be some area in the new Civic Center for display of historical documents?
Yeah, that, we're going to take care of that ourselves as a town. Yes, we're going to try to put some on the walls, some thinner cabinetry that we can keep historic stuff on.
Good.
Lockable.
Lockable.
No one else have anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.